Community Development Block Grant. We're gonna get a report on it. Sorry, we don't seem to have microphones tonight. Excuse me, I have a meeting for you, so I'm not as fast as you speak.
Everybody hear me all right?
Yeah.
First, I'd like to thank the town for allowing the county as a public hearing. My name is Brandon Hamilton, and I'm our rehabilitation specialist with Sussex County's Community Development Housing Department. Our office applies for in finishers the Community Development Block Grant program, or CDBG as we call it, for Sussex County. We apply for the funding on behalf of municipalities and rural communities.
Can you speak slower, please?
Sure. The CDBG funding, it comes from the US Department of Housing and Urban Development, and it's allocated to Sussex and Kent Counties through the Delaware State Housing Authority. This grant year, there's approximately $2 million that will be awarded to Kent and Sussex Counties on a competitive basis. One requirement for the Community Development Block Grant program is a full-time public hearing. This gives us an opportunity to explain the program and provide an update. Most importantly, it gives citizens and local leaders a chance to have input for the upcoming application. The Delaware State Housing Authority governs the grant process through their consolidated plan, lists the activities eligible for receipt of funding. Eligible activities include housing re-earbilitation, sewer and water hookups, demolition, and infrastructure projects. All projects apply for must benefit persons of low to moderate income, as defined with incomes at or below eighty percent of area median income for Sussex Counties. These numbers are set by HUD annually, and for our most recent year of 2023 fiscal year, a single-person household, their max income was forty-nine thousand eight hundred. A two-person household, their income was fifty-six thousand nine hundred, and the max income would go up about sixty-eight thousand dollars per person in the household. Up as high as it would need to go. Historically, the majority of funding is used for owner-occupied housing rehabilitation. This is ideal because it helps maintain the existing housing stock in Sussex County. Housing rehab includes roofing, doors, windows, electrical and plumbing upgrades, as well as energy upgrades. In order to qualify for the program, the home must be owner-occupied, be the owner's primary residence. The owner and their household must be qualified as low or moderate income. The home needs to be insured, their county taxes and utilities must be covered. In the case of Blades, I would imagine that the town's taxes and utilities should be covered as well. When we do a rehabilitation with a home, we require it to lean on a property, or to protect the funding, for all homeowners regardless of age. Any work that is less than fifteen thousand dollars is a five-year lien, and any work that is more than fifteen thousand dollars is a ten-year lien. These liens are zero-interest, pro-rated payback. So if the house is sold before the lien has expired, part of the funding will have to be paid back to our department. This is really to protect the funding, so that a homeowner doesn't flip the home after we do any rehab work on it in order to earn the profit. With a lien protection, any sale or transfer that takes place before the lien expires simply results in reuse of funding for another. If there's any sort of demolition work involved, there will be a permanent lien placed on the property. In the last five years, Blades has received a total of one-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars in Community Development Block Grant funding from Sussex County for housing rehab. With this funding, we have assisted seven different households. We also have the ability to help town of Blades' households with emergency repairs using funds that are provided by the Sussex County Council. Emergency repairs include things like no water, no heat, severe roof leaks, broken and frozen pipes, and handicap accessibility projects. Currently, we have five households on our waiting list for the town of Blades. I left a copy of the waiting list to the town clerk. Because they're closing walkways with residents, town staff is usually able to review the list and let us know if any of the properties listed are rentals, or the homeowner is deceased, or the property is sold. Also, you may be aware of any additional properties that could benefit from the program. If that is the case, please reach out to them and give us their contact information. They can call our office at three zero two eight five five seven 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 seven, and we will send a brief, one-page application that will allow return and or respond at all rates.
Could you repeat that phone number?
Sure. Three zero two eight five five seven 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 seven. Or you can also just call the county administration building and ask for Community Development now. In order to apply for funding, each town must demonstrate a waiting list with at least four projects. Can you still hear me? Again, the main reason we hold this public hearing is to allow citizens and representatives to have input on this year's CDBG application. Our office is happy to assist with additional information. We can also provide brochures, flyers for the offices, or notes for the website or social media. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
If the town has to have four on the waiting list, what's the maximum number you can add?
There's no maximum number. Some of the larger towns have, you know, twenty, you know, twenty, thirty people. You know, the countywide list is set by office. Yes, sir.
Yes, what's considered low to high?
So, a... Now, this is fiscal year twenty-three, which is, our fiscal year begins in July. So that'll be our twenty-four, we'll get new income numbers then. But for fiscal year twenty-three, a single-person household was forty-nine thousand eight hundred dollars. Two people in a house would be fifty-six thousand nine hundred dollars. Three-person is sixty-four thousand dollars even. It goes up roughly six to eight thousand dollars per person in the household, starting at that.
So, three people is what?
Sixty-four thousand even. Any other questions or comments?
Does each town have to give a certain amount of money, or is it all going to the main pop?
So, we apply for each municipality that chooses to, on behalf of that municipality. And then the Delaware State Housing Authority will distribute funds through us that are allocated for each individual town. So they give it to us on a need basis. So typically, the towns with the larger waiting list will get a larger sum. And we don't, there's no guarantee that we're necessarily going to get money for each town every year. Most of the time, we don't get money for each town every year. It's usually every other year, or, you know, maybe two years in a row, then a year off. It really depends on how long the waiting list is.
You made the comment after you mentioned the salary or the income amount for family, but there seemed to be a comment that you made about the, it seems, its sound and its sufficiency Blades, in some form or another.
So we get, we get funding that can only be used in Blades. So that, that funding that we apply for on behalf of Blades can only be used within Blades' town limits.
One-hundred percent.
Yes, of that funding, yeah. We also have, the Sussex County Council provides our office with a direct fund that we can use for emergency repairs. And that can be used county-wide. So it doesn't have to be necessarily used in a town or outside of a town, but if someone calls us with, like, say, a handicap accessibility need, or an emergency, you know, no heater, no water, the things that are considered emergencies, we can help with that funding within, within any town limit or outside of town. Yes, sir.
Excuse me, is the money that's coming in from the federal government on this, is it still split between Sussex and Kent Counties?
Yes, sir. Yeah, it's distributed between Sussex and Kent, which is on a competitive basis, so it's really need-based. The past several years, we've got the majority of the funding from Kent, as opposed to Kent. So there's no guarantee that's going to happen every year, but more than likely, we probably will get it. Yes, sir.
Does the town approach you, or do you approach the town?
Um, the... I guess I don't really know the answer to that. Historically, the, the county has applied for it on behalf of the town because of the requirements of the CDBG program. There's, there's extensive amount of paperwork that goes along with record keeping and so on, so forth.
I'm just wondering if you're interested in this?
Oh, well, we've worked with Blades for, I mean, much longer than I've worked with the county. So, and I believe the counties have seen these programs since the seventies, I think.
I don't understand what you're saying.
The county's been using, been receiving funds for the Community Development Block Grant for, you know, for decades. I know, I can't tell you specifically how long the county's been working with Blades or whatever.
Is this something that was, Blade was told this is going to be, you're going to have this?
Oh, no, no, it's not. There's several towns in the county that do not participate.
It's not something that the town has to do?
Correct.
So somebody approached the town?
I don't, I don't know the answer to that. I have to, I have to see how that originally happened. I'm sure it was a very long time ago that they had that.
I'm just wondering how.
That's my question. Yes, sir.
As previous mayor of town, Blades, I mean, I've dealt with CDBG, we've had a public hearing before. The county did a presentation, the town said, hey, we'd like to have this opportunity to set this program, and if the, from the town council itself, the authority to come into town, they approached me to do that. And the town's residents have benefited very well off this program. And we don't normally want to be able to put in new heating and access systems in there, new windows. We did some local work too, things like that, so. I mean, it's very beneficial to the town's people that live in here without any obligation to the town to pay anything.
Yes, sir.
What's the typical waiting time? From application to actually getting the...
For an individual homeowner, or?
Yes, for an individual homeowner.
So it depends really on the time of year they turn the application. Definitely, we'll begin working on our, we receive our funding in July, and we'll begin working on our towns, the town funding first. So if someone wants to fill out an application while we're supposed to receive the funding, it could be quick, but also that there's, I think we have five people on the waiting list. I would estimate we'll probably get, you know, maybe somewhere in the neighborhood of sixty to eighty thousand dollars if Blades does receive money this year. So not necessarily everyone at list would be able to be helped this time around with this funding, but that's why we do apply every year.
So typically, it could be one to two years, or maybe even more?
It could be, yes. And then emergency repairs can generally be assessed through.
When do you anticipate starting the building?
Um, well, we're not... What would happen is we will receive, if we receive funding for Blades this year, we'll find out in late spring, early summer, if funding is allocated to Blades. And at that point in time, we'll contact the folks on the Blades' waiting list to see if they still need help, and then we'll complete the formal application process with those folks while we verify ownership and income in that company, and then we'll assess their needs accordingly. That, that should start, you know, sometime, we'll receive the funding in July, and then sometime before, usually the summertime next year, we'll get started in Blades. Okay, any other questions? Brandon Hamilton? Okay. Uh, one more thing. So since Blades has historically used this Community Development Block Grant funding for housing rehab, I'm going to apply for that again this year's application. This year's application is due one or before February nineteen, twenty twenty-four. I've given a packet of documents to the town clerk, that we need council's approval and mayor's signature. That will be it. Thank you, guys.
We truly appreciate the help and the information. Okay, well, now we're moving to our regular meeting session. First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. Okay?
I did read it in the minutes, but I think either this minute or the minutes we need now have to document that our previous mayor resigned off the security.
It's bottom.
Major Lee, what do you mean, the minutes, or this minute?
It's in the minutes at the very end.
Oh, it says very end. I understand that the mayor actually moved himself from the meeting to build, that's all it says.
He didn't officially resign until two days later.
We need documented that he did resign.
Two days later.
He did not resign the night of the meeting. He resigned two days later, so it could not go in the minutes after the meeting. That's impossible. His official resignation was two days after the meeting.
He resigned in front of his final one of the...
He walked out. But he did not give a letter of resignation until two days later.
Better read the charter.
Verbally, we can't enforce that until he gives it to us in writing. He could have changed his mind.
Now, he had plenty of witnesses.
This is true, it could be an argument for that as well, but we were officially given written notice two days later. We accepted the written notice two days later. Okay, anything else concerning the minutes? Okay. All right, may I have a motion on the floor to accept the motion?
Up here?
Yeah.
There's one word in my statement for parks and cemeteries, and it says, "compared." On the one, two, three, four, fifth line down, the first word in the seventh should be "compared," not "compared," but "prepared."
Should be "prepared"?
Yes, "prepared" rather than "compared." We can change that.
I would like to make a motion, that the minutes be accepted with the correction.
Can we get a second? I probably moved to second, if the minutes be accepted with corrections. All in favor by saying aye? All opposed?
Call for question on the motion.
These are the minutes, come on, man.
We've got a motion on the floor.
Do you have any questions? You have a question? Vote again, all in favor, aye? All opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda will be the police report.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
And Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Everybody can hear me all right?
Yes.
I can talk loud enough, so. All right. I got a few things to go over real quick in my report. Just to let everybody know, December of twenty-three, there were six traffic arrests versus six the month before, zero parking tickets each month. Uh, there were zero warnings issued in December versus two the month before. We had one person arrested on one criminal charge, December versus zero the month before. Zero fugitive each month. We had two accidents in December versus the month before. We only had one. DUIs was zero. We handled sixteen complaints versus ten the month before. The criminal arrest was one for drug paraphernalia. The complaints consist of assist other, two, fraud, two, trespass, one. Found property, one miscellaneous investigation, one. Two sex complaints, one shoplifting, one drug complaint, and three property checks. Just to give everybody a heads up. Now, the next thing I have is, just to give everybody a heads up, the statistics I'm about to give you are from two thousand twenty-three in Delaware, okay? Just to let everybody know, the ten most affordable places to live in Delaware in the zip code of one-nine-nine-seven-three, which includes Blades, Seaford, and the surrounding area, is rated number one. That's the most affordable. Affordable, yes, ma'am. So, but, on the flip side of that, in two thousand twenty-three, the most dangerous cities to live in Delaware, when you include the zip code of one-nine-seven-three, that includes Seaford and Blades, number one. Just to give you a heads up. To let you know, Laurel is number two. So we're right there to go. Okay? Now, y'all are not going to like this one either. The ten worst places to live in Delaware in two thousand twenty-three. The zip code one-nine-nine-seven-three includes Laurel, I mean, excuse me, includes Seaford and Delaware, number two. No, Long Neck is. Long Neck's number one. Laurel's number three. So we're number two. All right? Just to give you a heads up, the way things are trending, the way things are going. Okay? Now, we finished out the year of two thousand twenty-three in pretty good shape, the police department did. As of right now, for two thousand twenty-three, the police department ended up getting one-hundred-and-fifty-seven-thousand-seven-hundred-seventy-three dollars and thirty-eight six, thirty-eight cents in grants. Didn't cost the town nothing for these grants. That's what we did in two thousand twenty-three. Already in twenty-four, we are at twenty-two-thousand-three-hundred-seventy-eight dollars and two cents, already for twenty-four. And we're just getting started. Just to give you a heads up of what we're doing, okay, for the police department. Now, my administrative assistant for the police department was passing out surveys. I know everybody didn't get them, we ran out, we weren't expecting this many people. If you give her your name, your email address, or your phone number, or whatever, we will get these to you, okay? These are the Blades Police Department's Community Service on Public Safety and Law Enforcement. It's a survey, it's eleven pages. We went more in-depth this time, and a lot of y'all, all it is, you have to put a mark somewhere, okay? You can either bring them in and drop them off to us, or you can email them to Lori, her name, and that email address is right on there. Or you can call the police department, and we will come and pick them up. We have no problem doing that, okay? All you guys need to do is just call, and we will do that. All right? We're looking to get everybody's input on what they think, how things have been going, all right? Because what we want to do is be more transparent, even more than what we are now, okay? We are here to serve you, the residents of this community. So if you provide us with input, then we can work with that. If we don't know, we can't fix it, okay? It's got to be a cooperation, a team effort. Because without your help, we can't be successful, okay? So we are looking to change some things around, and when I first came here, back in May of twenty-two, I said, then we rebuild this police department from the ground up, and that's what I'm doing. But I need your help, and I need your input, or what you would like to say, okay? Lori will be here for a lot of you, for the HOA, I guess it's supposed to be tomorrow night, if the weather's not bad, for Little Meadows. I've, I've been told both ways, so I don't know what's going on, but I just want to let y'all know. Oh, yes, ma'am.
Yes, and other residents, we have gotten some feedback from some members of the community concerned about the weather reports. Now, my views are all predictions, and we don't know quite what's going on. We did stop by the fire hall earlier today to find out if there's an opportunity for us to be scheduled for Thursday. And so we are, so the meeting action was literally moved to Thursday for this space. However, the most recent report that came out, thank you very much, Lisa, from NOAA, appears that the conditions may not be as bad as they were previously predicted. It lives up to expectations. So that was a little bit different. And right-hand flooding and all of that stuff. So we wanted to make a final decision in the morning, because of course, things are changing. So we will watch your emails and then... But, you know, safety is really our first priority. With the contacts and folks that it reaches out to, obviously, that express concerns about climate.
Okay, no problem, thank you. If the meeting's tomorrow, or if it's Thursday, for y'all that live in Little Meadows, you didn't get the survey, we will have a lot more of them with us. Lori will have them with us either Tuesday, tomorrow night, or Thursday night, and we'll get you one then, okay? The sooner you get it done, the sooner you can get it back to us, the sooner we can get everything tabulated, okay? For a lot of y'all, some of y'all probably don't know, we do have a third officer, he is in the academy. March first is graduation, he's got seven weeks left, he's in. So he's got seven weeks counting this week, so he's on the homestretch. So, once that's done, he will be FTO-ing, he'll be doing field training for twelve weeks, and then he'll be on his own. We will be having an, oh, backup. Or, surveys will also be on our Facebook page, so you can like us on our Facebook page, and you can pull it up there if you would like, that's up to you, all right? The thirty-first, the police department will be sponsoring another open house at six-thirty, right here at the fire department. We're going to be here, we're going to go over a lot of stuff, and hopefully, we can have everything done, even with the surveys, so maybe we can put all that out there at the open house, okay? So, please come. We're going to lay everything out on the line, what we're going to look at trying to do for two thousand twenty-four and beyond, all right? Because like I said, we're here to serve y'all. I do, I would like to take this chance real quick and thank everybody for supporting the police department, because without your support, we wouldn't accomplish what we're doing now, so. And the other thing is, if you're interested, we do have a community outreach committee. And they are working with the programs that the, that the police department's doing for the community. So if you're interested, please contact Lori at the police department, because she's heading it up for us, and she's going to be having a meeting here soon, because we got some events that we're getting ready to put on, so we, we want to get that up and running. So if you're more than interested in participating, helping getting us in, getting back out to the community, please, this... We're here to serve y'all, and we need your help, right up front. Yes, Lori?
Tell me about the slides.
Oh. On the thirty-first, we are going to have a slide presentation also on stuff that we've accomplished so far here, and that we've been doing, okay? Any questions from anybody?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Would now be the time to ask about the squatter house that's on Eighth Street? And what's happening with that?
Code enforcement is looking into that, and he's supposed to be going out there... Wednesday.
At nighttime or during the day?
He's going out... He's going out there, supposedly he's supposed to be doing it during the daytime. He's gonna be going out there Wednesday afternoon with an officer.
They won't be there, so they come in in the evening. And, um, just observing, what I've seen is that once the house is, I guess, like, open, um, they have a light outside that flashes, like a flashlight that just kinda flashes. Um, and that's, I guess, how they tell people that it's okay to come. Um, but they don't get there till after dark.
Okay, so the people that are squatting, it's not there until after dark?
Yep. That's what I've seen.
We'll fire that off to Marcus, he can put it in for him, but that way he can address that accordingly.
Yeah, I mean, and, and if he watches for that light, and when they come up, they come up with flashlights, so it's not like they're trying to be sneaky about it.
Right, because I talked to Marcus the day about that house, and he told me he was going up, wanted to go with an officer, and I told him Wednesday would be the, the best day. So I'll, I'll get up with Marcus tomorrow and let him know that.
Yeah, I've seen them like between six and nine-ish, when they, at some point during that time. If the weather's bad, they're in there earlier, but it's usually after dark.
We will take care of that.
Okay, I appreciate it.
No problem. Any other questions?
Did you ever get a response about, uh, light, recent, you know, you were gonna check into having a survey done, or traffic light?
Yes. Oh, the one at a High Street Market?
Correct.
We're still waiting for Deldoc to do their thing. You know how Delt- you know how the state is.
Are you saying they haven't done it yet?
We have, we haven't heard anything. Once they do it, they're gonna get back with us with the results. We haven't heard anything back from Deldoc yet. So, any other questions? Y'all have a great evening.
Thank you, Chief. Next on the agenda is a report from planning and zoning. There is a report, we got nothing in for the month of December. The projects that we had approved previously are still, um, going on. The house on Summit Circle is about eighty percent complete. And the house that, uh, Hunter Creek is building is about at the same level. They keep competing with each other, it seems like one comes up, and then the next week the other comes up. Um, but those houses should be finished within the next month, with things look at this time. We are expecting to get something in for the month of February, and we'll go from there. Okay, that's it for, uh, planning and zoning. Not really, it's not a time yet, but we'll get to it, we'll definitely be done answering. Okay? All right, next on the agenda will be the committee reports. First one is housing. Building permits for four. So, try to send out the trash, one complaints, one, uh, ordinance violation for trash, two rental inspections, four. And the mileage is on the, uh, car sixty-five thousand, five hundred and eighty miles. Next on the committee reports will be housing. I'm sorry, water. You want the mic to go?
Well, I'll try, just, the people that are back in here, I won't use the mic for others. Uh, I will grab a mic. Last month, the water department had two fire hydrants repaired, that was the number one. And also a water leak on, uh, a main on Third Street. So that took some time on well number one. Pumped one million, two hundred, twenty-three thousand, five hundred and eighty-four gallons. And that pump ran for one hundred and fifty-three point six hours. Pump number two, pumped forty-three thousand, eight hundred and fifteen gallons. And that pump ran for one hundred and, ran for one hundred and forty-one point three hours. Pump number three had one million, two hundred and eighty-two thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight gallons. And that pump ran for a hundred and seventy-seven hours. And that is a total of gallons, two million, five hundred and fifty thousand and thirty-seven gallons. Thank you.
Okay, um, let's go over this again before we proceed. Your numbers are coming from a different source than what we have on the report.
That's, that's your water laws. This one is.
Yeah, you're reading off a log sheet at this point.
Okay, and so we are back. I've got different numbers, yell again. On well number one, one million, one hundred and eighty-six thousand, eight hundred and eight gallons. And that pump worked for one hundred and fifty-three point six hours. Well number two, estimated at one million, five hundred and nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty gallons. And that pump was, ran for two hundred and one point three hours. Well number three, one million, two hundred and eighty-two thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight gallons. And that pump ran for a hundred and seventy-seven hours. Total, three million, nine hundred and seventy-nine thousand, one hundred and ninety-six gallons. And the total hours is five hundred and thirty-one point nine. Line up a little better. Sorry.
I have a question.
Do you have, do you have a lighter?
I have a question. I think it's germane to the report. I understand that the, the water is tested every day of the month. Were there any days that the water was not tested? Were there any days that the water failed the test, and if so, what was done to remediate the problem?
All right, we'll save that for now, we wanna finish the reports. Uh, that question can be answered later in the session. Okay, next is streets.
As you all know, it's all unsure, our lights were all up all through December, they're now ready to come down. We're waiting for Seaford, I mean, Seaford, uh, building and code department to give us a date as to when they'll come down. But we need them and their equipment to get them down. Uh, we're also assessing the streets in the town to see which ones we wanna utilize funds for this year to have Delmar painting or another company. Whoever comes in with the best bid, we pay. Uh, our banners, you, you might have noticed, were not put up. They're very old, most of them are ripped. Made a decision to not put them up. So we're looking at costs for new banners out, trying to get some prices. We have enough salt for one storm. So Frank has been told to buy two to four more pallets of salt. So we are ready, and in that, we also had an area cleared out, so where we have a place to put it, which we didn't have before. And the guys have been utilizing the rainy days to clean up and organize the warehouses. Any questions?
Okay, and next on the agenda is parks and cemetery.
Good evening, can you hear me? Yes, yes, all right. Uh, my teacher voice. The parks and cemetery are on low, low maintenance right now, because we have water comes first, and of course in the winter, streets and roads come second. So the park will become more important as the weather improves. Uh, we have grants that are ready to go for different equipment. Uh, I'm working on one right now to get some equipment for children that, uh, have some kind of a handicap, so that they can actually get in to, uh, play. Uh, the school has actually purchased some of those so that the kids can actually get their wheelchair, or their crutches, or whatever, onto the platform where the, the, uh, activity rails are there. So it is possible, and it's, uh, we're working on that. So, uh, the kids are still playing there. They're playing football, and soccer, and playing on the, the, uh, equipment, even though it's, that leaves all over it, and pine needles, all that, and so here at all. And I have to wait till, um, our workmen, uh, have a chance to clean it up if, at all. Questions?
What's the story on the pickleball court?
There is no story on the pickleball court. The court is ninety-eight percent complete, the two spaces don't need to be painted. When it gets warm enough, we'll paint it. And the net, uh, we found a place that we can get the net that was supposed to cost two thousand dollars, we can get it for less than three hundred. So we have a person that's working with us that runs the pickleball court for a town, two, two towns in, uh, Pennsylvania. And he has turned us on on where to get the net from. We were informed two months ago that there was an anonymous donor to donate the cost of the net. I have not been told who that anonymous donor is, or when the money is coming in. If whoever the anonymous donor is, is here tonight, please call me at your convenience. If not, I will find out who that person is, and we will get the net. I don't think you're gonna be playing pickleball in thirty-degree weather. So, uh, by spring, everything should be totally complete. If you wanna know why it's not finished, I'm going to tell you. I had three children and two sisters in the hospital all this summer, and I've been traveling back and forth. So the last thing on my mind was painting when my family needed me. So, now that my family issues are all over with, we'll get back to the pickleball court. All right? What about what?
What about some more titty equipment for?
That's what, that, that's what Nancy is working on, she already announced that. All right, next on the agenda will be dining with the police report.
All right, uh, can you hear me? I've also, I, I don't have too much energy, so I'm gonna be useless today. Uh, my report, I've been out for like the last couple of weeks, out all this, talking to, uh, the chief and Lori. But I've been calling them every once in a while, making sure everything's okay. I'm, I'm back on the feet, so they'll see my face a little bit more often. As the chief said, the candidate is doing great and dober, and he looking forward, come, the blades will start working. At this time, like the, thank Seaford Police Department and Delaware State Police, they've been a good, big help with us as far as State Police been doing patrols through here. When, you know, there is no officer here, you'll see them parked all around town here, so they're helping. Seaford, whatever we need, all we gotta do is ask them, they're a big help with us there. Uh, paperwork has been started for next year's grant. As the chief said, we've already got five, two grants, we've got, uh, two more grants that we received money on. The first grant that we received money on is, uh, we're getting security cameras put in the police department. That is one requirement we had to have, get certified through the state of Delaware. The second grant we applied for and we got is for security cameras out to the park. So there are being security cameras out to the park to, to our grant. So Nancy will secure it up. Very good. Uh, as chief said, that we're planning a meet and greet in January, the thirty-first. I encourage everybody to come, if you have any questions, you know, we'll be here to answer them. You know, if they're good or bad, we wanna hear about it, that's another way we can learn and try to help improve the police department. I'd like to thank the councilmen for working with us and supporting us on the third officer. As you see, we do need it, with the report that, uh, the chief put as far as crime wise, it's coming down this way from the city. I read in the report a couple of weeks ago, Salisbury having problems with, uh, four-wheelers and motorcycle, uh, the dirt bike gangs, they're running up down the street. Well, we'll get ready to come, probably coming this way too, so. They already, I know it too, I remember. So the next matter is, we've been talking what we need to do. The chief and I have been looking for additional fourth officer to put on this fall. We're doing that, we're applying for the cop grant this year again. If we get the cop grant, it'll pay seventy-five percent of all third wages for three years. We have to pick up the twenty-five percent. And, uh, we feel assured that between grants, and working with the council, and our state official, that we can come up with, uh, the extra twenty-five percent to help get a fourth officer. We've been working, we've been looking everywhere to get back the money to do this, so. I got a meeting sometime this month with one of our state officials, we're gonna talk, see what, what, in which way he can help us in getting more money for us on that. Uh, when the chief was hired, he said he was gonna build the police department from the ground up, I think he did. You can see that they're between, when he took over in what was before. We're moving in, working direction, improving. We have, we have made when in the, uh, department. I feel like, I feel good when this, we get new applications now. So we must be doing a good job in the police department rebuilding it. When you get applications from certified police officers that want to work for us, it makes me feel good knowing that we're doing a good job, that somebody wants these, and we're telling them to work for us. And like, uh, uh, we're looking at that, and hopefully if we can, uh, find a way before officer, we can get one of these certified officers, we can have him on the road in a month's time, once it's hard. And like I said, we, we're trying to get ready for the future. The future's gonna come quickly, it's, it's a statue, you know? It's filtering down from the city, the city's cracking down on crimes, so what they're gonna do, they're coming this way. Like this, this Salisbury now, Laurel, and it's gonna be us too, but we wanna be ready to do it. The police department would like to thank the town council, the Blades Park Department, and the citizens of Blades for their support. If we all work together as a team, we can choose, we can achieve our goal for the town of Blades. So we need to work together, so we're working against each other, and come as, we're like a, a family of Blades. And I think we can get a lot accomplished, and our goal, we can meet your goal, so thank you all.
Thank you, darling. Next is the mayor's report. Uh, since December eleventh, um, I have been acclimating myself to what needs to be done to keep the town running. Lisa and I have been meeting regularly, we've gone over, uh, the bills, the bills are being paid on time, the checks assigned. Those things that needed to be improved on a routine basis are being improved every week. I made a appointment to spend some time at the town hall every week. Uh, we're on the phone constantly, if not daily, uh, with Lisa and, uh, Crystal to see what's going on, what problems are, the fire hydrants, and if anything comes up. Uh, they know, uh, even though I work every day, uh, I still put this town first. And we still have time to, to communicate, to see what's going on. Uh, last Friday, I attended the, uh, SCAT breakfast, and, um, picked up some information on what's going on with, at the state level. Um, it looks like we have a lot of new people in office this year, or coming up, new people running. And there are some things, there's some talk that money is going to dry up some. I said, not really. We're not gonna be fighting for that. So, I've met some people that will be talking, and I have some appointments for the month of January and early February. See what we can do, because we still need some grant money. We still need some money to, to get things fixed. The fire hydrants aren't cheap. We had one extra, I believe. Two, and then we can use both of them.
Two, and we have one left, one to be replaced by insurance.
Okay, so we have to wait for the check from the council, okay? Alright, so we try to keep them just in case, because for some reason, people driving through Blades must zero in on our fire hydrants or something. We, we replaced with three or four in the last year. That's all, that's for the mayor's report. I, I did, I do have the keys. I have been coming in. I have been working diligently to make sure that the town runs efficiently. My, my goal is to make sure that things continue to run smoothly. Those hiccups that we've been having, we're trying to eliminate them. My goal is also to have this council to work as one unit. One thing I wanna stop doing for everyone is talk about what's going on. Who's messing up? Who's not doing well? That's really nobody's business. We're here to run this town, and we're here because you elected us to be the members that run this town. So let us do our jobs. If somebody is not doing their job, then we will take the appropriate action. There have been things that have been said, there have been talked about. I don't care. That's the past. Right now, right now, we wanna work together. Don indicated that. I think every member of this council has, has come to me either together or, or one-on-one and said that we need to work together. And I believe that, and I believe we can. If we put the past behind us and stop talking about what happened last year, five years ago, seven years ago, ten years ago, and we start looking towards the future, I think we can do great things for this town. I have found out some of the things that, that can happen. We have bids going out for the water to cross thirteen, so it's no longer being talked about. It's actually happening. We have, we got a call from someone that owns the property on the other side of thirteen, and they wanna talk with us about some more developments. I know you've heard from the previous mayor, but I have done my own investigation, and I can see this town is able to grow. We have the potential to grow, even though the economy is shaky. And I think we can do that and not cost the town a whole lot of money. My, my prayer is that we can get that second tower built, because I've gone over all the water tables and what's going on concerning the water for this town. And by the time we do everything that we have already committed to do, our tower is maxed out. Our wells are maxed out. There's nothing else we can do right now. The, the people that wanna build the apartment complex, I was against that from day one. I didn't know it was already too late to stop it. But I have already conveyed that that is not gonna happen, because we can't give them the water. So if they don't have water, they can't build. So right now, they can talk all they want. We don't have the water to give them, so they can't build. So we'll see how, how that goes down the road. I'll keep your abreast on what's going to happen and how things, how things progress with that. Yeah, phase two, when I first moved there, phase two was supposed to be unbuildable because of the water. And now it's buildable. I don't know how that transformed from one area to another, but that's one of the things that we are gonna continue to fight and do what we can to, to see what we can do, to hold that back. Okay, so that's it for the mayor's report.
The door hangers and shut offs, we put out fifty-nine door hangers in December, but due to the Christmas holiday, there was zero to shut off. We will be putting door hangers out Friday, like, the nineteenth of January for all towns who have two amounts for water. Shut offs are scheduled for Tuesday, January twenty-third. The Denrec two thousand three Outdoor Recreation Park and Trails Grant, otherwise known as FORD, the update on that is that our application has been approved by the Parks and Recreation Council an amount of nine hundred seventy-seven dollars, representing seventy-five percent of the total project cost of thirteen hundred two dollars and ninety-three. We had only requested half, fifty percent. We are waiting for the executed grant agreement from the secretary of Delaware Parks and Recreation Council, and these funds have been awarded in order to replace four established water to grow in the park. And finally, we can say the USDA ECWAG grant final draw has been received to close out the PFOS-PFOA Water Treatment Plant Project. Closing the project at one million six hundred eighty-six thousand two hundred seventeen dollars and ten cents. The state of Delaware provided nine hundred seventy-three thousand six hundred forty-one dollars, and USDA ECWAG was at seven hundred twelve dollars, five hundred seventy-six dollars and ten cents. The tax bills for two thousand twenty-four were sent out on January second, and in observance of Martin Luther King Junior Day, the Blades Town offices will be closed Monday, January fifteenth.
Okay, at this time, we're going into new business. New business entails a council reorganization. Alright, we're gonna start off by motion to accept Bob's resignation as-
I make a motion to be sent to Bob, to the resignation from the mayor.
It's been promptly moved. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Questions? Alright, it's been promptly moved and seconded that we accept Bob Atkins' resignation as mayor. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Step one.
I make a motion that the vice president takes the position of the remaining term of the mayor. Does that sound correct? Can't do that. Vice mayor.
Can't do that.
Vice mayor or vice president.
Can't do that.
Can't do that.
Can't do that.
It's gotta be on the agenda to do that. It's not a, you don't have the agenda, agenda to nominate a mayor.
I can't hear anything.
I said it's not on the agenda to nominate a mayor. You just have organization, organization of council. It needs to be on the agenda that you're gonna nominate a mayor.
According to the charter, according to the charter, he's already filling vacancies. They're just officiating.
Correct, but it has to be nominated by the council. It has to be on the agenda.
Okay, I nominated. Is that correct?
It's not on the agenda, though.
The three-year board's organization to move place mayor to mayor.
Your lawyer's right here. Ask him.
Article twelve.
Yes, that's one I have right here.
Craig Lyles, a town solicitor. I hear Mr. Reese's argument. I believe it's Mr. Reese behind me. And it's, it's an interesting one. It's a provocative one. But I, it's my opinion that the way the agenda is framed is sufficient notice. I mean, look at the people in the room. Kinda gives you an indication that this was coming. Could it have been a little more detailed? Of course. But my opinion is that you, at this time, under section twelve, can name a mayor.
I can elect him, not name one. Electors are ordered to be charged at five pounds.
I named, with exception of fifteen, Pierre Fullman. Reverend Doctor Pierre A. Gacy Senior as mayor.
Can I make a motion that we go into executive session for this?
That's, it's not a proper subject for executive session.
So was the motion made correctly now?
I'm sorry?
Did I make the motion correctly?
You did. But I don't believe it's been seconded yet, alright? If it was, I didn't hear it.
Looking for a second question. Seconded. Is it my job to call for a count of vote?
Presiding officer calls for the-
Presiding officer.
Is there a question?